Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the December 20, 2022, meeting of the Planning Commission of Morro Bay. We are a quorum, all in attendance here, and we will start the meeting with a moment Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any Planning Commissioner announcements tonight? Nothing? Nothing?
Yeah, I just wanted to say on behalf of myself that I couldn't make the party from the city of Morro Bay to give us a certificate of appreciation, but I'd like to thank the city for that, and it's a pleasure to serve the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. It was really a nice evening. We missed some of you.
Yeah.
And we actually got to see a couple of the former Planning Commissioners.
Oh, nice.
It was really nice to catch up with them. Yeah, it was a nice event. Certainly, season's greetings to everyone. Happy Hanukkah, Christmas coming up, New Year's, and tomorrow is, of course, the solstice, and the Salinan tribe will be having their event down at Moro Rock. I believe it starts at about 1:00, and they have a small group that does climb the rock, but down at the base of the rock, there is a celebration, and they are very welcoming to the public. Often, there are some drummers there, and they try and keep it a sort of intertribal event.
You say around 1:00?
I think it's around 1:00 on the south side of the rock, sort of past that parking lot area in the open space there. Yeah. So that would be it, and we have public comment for anything not on the agenda, and I don't see anybody in the audience except our applicants, who will be speaking later to what we do have on our later agenda. So, open public comment. Anybody waiting in the queue, AGP?
There is nobody in the queue.
Thank you. So we will close public comment. Go to the --
Public comment?
Up, there she is, Ms. Winholdt, just in the nick of time.
Thank you. It's really about your agenda item tonight, but I cannot stay. There's been some things happening for me and my neighborhood, but I want to say, and I think it's on behalf of the community, I knew Jim Maul and his wife, and I can't tell you how disappointed I am that this house was allowed to deteriorate past the point where it could be saved. It was okay in 2018, it was okay in 2019, and certainly, the previous owners probably didn't do anything to help in the intermediate time, but the current owners, for the last 18 months, have also added to that neglect, in my opinion. We don't have a report from 2021 when they say that it was too bad to fix. What we have is a report from 2022 in October, so it's, you know, it's 17, 18 months old. But what was the condition back in the day? Could it have been saved back then? I don't know. Water under the bridge, but just know, I can't tell you how disappointed. It's a loss to the community, the reputation of the Mauls. You know, I'm an ancient resident here, and those of us who live here find it very hard to know that that house is going to be destroyed and lost. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. Appreciate you coming in. All right. So we will now close public comment, move on to our consent calendar, which is just the current and advanced planning processing list. Anybody need to ask questions about that? Pull that. All right, then we will receive and file that. And we don't need to -- moving on to our public hearing. And I believe we have Nancy here to give that. Getting our audio video up and running there. There we go. Okay, here we go. It's an application for coastal development permit for a new home at 3009 Beach Comer Drive. And that looks right. Site information shows where the site is. It's located on Beach Comer Drive with the west side adjacent to the coastal dunes. The site is 8,100 square feet, 60 by 135 approximately, and the existing home was built in 1971. Historic building assessment. This home was designed by James Maul, noted local architect, as his own private residence. It's not on a historic registry, but is noted locally as locally historically significant. A structural review of the home found water damage, cracked foundations, water damage around doors and windows. The historic building assessment was updated, and they agreed with the structural report findings and requested archival photos be taken of the home prior to demolition. Environmental investigation. Sage Institute determined that the ESH limits in the 50-foot buffer, shown on this map, the ice plant is helping keep the coastal dune scrub back. The property line is 15 feet away from the 50-foot ESH buffer, so there is no effect on the ESH from the proposed work. There are bricks and hardscape materials spilling into the OA-zoned portion of the property, and those are in the conditions of approval to be removed. Sea level rising analysis. GeoSolutions analyzed the site for coastal hazards, risks, and found, not round, that the sea level rise risk is minimal through 2,100 based on the current modeling criteria. So no further analysis is required. Summary of proposed project. This is a site plan that shows you the 8,100-square-foot parcel, and it is the home is 3,335 square feet of conditioned living space with a 715-square-foot garage shop trash area. And you can see from this layout, Beach Comer is on the right side, and like many of the homes in this area with the narrow frontage, the entrance is at the center of the house. This is a more detailed floor plan that shows you the U-shaped house. The bedrooms, bathroom, and laundry are along the bottom, and the living room, kitchen, and great room is on the west side with the garage shop trash area on the right side. Zoning and overlay areas. This is in R1 S2A standard, development standards, and this was deemed complete under the current zoning code, so the current zoning code requirements apply. On the right column, this shows the proposed projects, standards for each of the setbacks, height and lot coverage, and as you can see, it meets or exceeds the standards in every This is a material board. The house is modern in design, but has the same layout as most of the homes in the neighborhood, which is the garage facing the frontage, and then either portion of the house off to the side or a fenced courtyard off to the side. This shows exactly the feature that I was talking about before, where the design is the garage faces the street, and then there is a courtyard with a gate or a front door adjacent to the garage, really on the same plane. The neighborhood is a modern, is a blend of modern homes and mid-1970s homes. Most have this design with the garage and a side yard fencing along the front setback. And that concludes the presentation. Staff recommendation is for approval of the coastal development permit, CDP 22-023, pursuant to the findings and conditions of approval included in Planning Commission Resolution 10-22. Thank you very much, Nancy. All right. Do we have questions for staff? Okay. Bill, you want to start it off?
So Nancy, would you take us through -- I want to make sure I understand why we're even seeing this case, where you brought it to commission because? What are the requirements to bring the case here?
Because it is in the coastal appeals jurisdiction, and it requires the discretionary coastal development permit. Is that what you mean?
Well, I'm trying to understand, yeah.
Yes.
And so it requires a discretionary perm?
Yes.
And the historic issue doesn't really play into that?
It's a requirement that they provide the historic report, the coastal dune report, sea level rise report, so all of those are analyzed, and then based on the conclusions of those reports, then conditions could be added or not.
Got it. Thank you.
That's it. Thanks, Bill. Mike, nothing? Yeah, Joe?
With respect to the tree in the front yard, are there any consequences should the tree not survive, other than it has to be replaced by two smaller trees?
So I'm not sure what you would like to suggest for consequence, but the intent is they are trying to preserve the tree. It is in a location where it could be damaged by construction, but I think their effort is to preserve the tree.
And should it be damaged irrevocably?
Is mitigation with replacement trees, two to one with 15-gallon containers or larger.
Okay.
Asia, did you have any questions?
I think I emailed staff about this, but just so that you guys heard, my question was why this house doesn't fall under the ADU requirements or in lieu fees that are in the new zoning code, and it's because it came in under the old zoning code, even though it hasn't been approved.
Yes, so projects deemed complete under the old zoning code can stay under the old zoning code, or they can choose to go under the new zoning code. Okay. Thanks.
Are there any other differences?
I'm sorry. It's really hard to hear with the heaters.
Yeah, I might turn that off.
Yeah, that would be great. We won't say that any of us are getting a little older, and it's harder to hear things when that heater's going. We are not saying that, no. Shout! Thanks, Scott. Okay. I'm sorry.
What was I asked?
I think that question was, were there any other differences between old and new zoning code that might be relevant to this particular project? I can't think of any.
So this is being submitted under the old code?
The old code.
As the applicant?
Because it completed everything prior.
What would be different under the new?
There are different standards under the new code. The new code doesn't go into effect for another two days, and then there are portions of it that won't go into effect, the implementation plan portion of it for our local coastal program that won't go into effect until the Coastal Commission certifies it, and the primary piece of the new code that relates to the implementation plan is the development standards for all the districts. And really, the districts themselves, the map, you know, those things won't go in place until the Coastal Commission certifies the changes. The other, you know, difference that you've heard us talk about before is the new code doesn't require garages, whereas the current code or old code does, so.
And I think also, the new code requires homes over 2,500 square feet to pay an inclusionary housing fee.
And/or provide the ADU that Commissioner King was talking about, and she did ask about that, like she indicated earlier, and our response was, well, it wasn't processed underneath that code, otherwise it would be doing just that.
Understood. Thanks.
Sure, go for it.
It just occurred to me. Reading the file, I understand you don't have any city ordinance related to historical preservation, or at least yet, although I think this project certainly underscores the need to have some kind of a city law in the books. But I also see how the SEQA law provides some kind of addressing of the issue because it includes historical preservation within the greater context of historical preservation. But I didn't see anything in the file beyond that. I mean, what would that mean in a practical situation? I mean, here, I guess the argument is there is really no cause to preservation, that the house has to be demolished, but in a situation that wasn't so extreme, and I don't know if you can answer this, but in a situation that wasn't so extreme, what would SEQA allow this board to do, if anything? Does that make any, does my question make any sense at all?
So I guess I would say this. The historical report that was done for the project, the original one, didn't find the project. Because it's 50 years or older, we require them to do the historical evaluation, and what it looked at was, is it eligible for listing on the state historic register or the federal historic register, and the answer to those two questions was no. So there really is no impact from a SEQA standpoint. Now, if the city had an adopted historic preservation ordinance that spoke to things like this home, and maybe we had a list of homes that we felt to be historic, and then that ordinance might tell us to do certain things, but we don't have those things in place, and we don't have any direction that would pull SEQA or have an issue related to SEQA. Basically, it didn't find it to be historically relevant from a state or federal standpoint, so there really is no SEQA impact.
So it really doesn't address this situation at all?
Yeah, the report comes back and says, yeah, it's historically relevant to the city of Morro Bay. Agree. What does that mean for us? If we had an ordinance that told us what it was supposed to mean, then we would be following that. We would be sitting here in front of you saying, the ordinance says X, Y, Z, the applicant's doing these, or there's, you know, you typically have some sort of exception process built in there when you have situations where maybe the structure, for whatever reason, can't be preserved, and there's usually options inside of the ordinances for things like that. So, but again, we don't have that, so we don't have anything to rely on, to fall back on, to say, yes, you're supposed to do, again, X, Y, or Z.
I also think, from what I've read of the proposed ordinance, the draft that was put together by the Historical Society and the group of people, that they were very careful to leave it up to homeowners, whether they were choosing that kind of inclusion. They really didn't want to put pressure on folks who maybe had bought a property, and then, of course, you get your home inspection, and it turns out there are a lot of challenges that are bigger and greater than something they can handle. So I think, you know, and we don't know what an ordinance will look like if and when we ever get one in town, and I hope we get something, especially looking at historic districts would be something that was part of what could be looked at. But I think there was an effort by the folks who were putting it together to make it not onerous to property owners, not a scary thing, so.
One little comment. Yeah, and I'd like to echo what both you and Scott said, the fact that the Planning Commission did talk about historical ordinance and districts. The sooner we do that, the better. That way, people have guidelines, but we have nothing now, right, Scott? So we're dependent on each project, but if we had guidelines, or policies, or an ordinance, that would be much more, you know, it would be easier for any applicant to apply those standards.
And the council goal-setting process will be coming up, and that will be a time, again, to do some individual lobbying, if you are so inclined. So if there are no further questions for staff at this point, we will open for public comment, and we will invite the applicants to come up first. I think they have something prepared. Welcome.
Good evening and happy holidays. Madam Chair, Commissioners and Staff, my name is Bill Eisman. I am the architect representing the applicant this evening. Nancy, thank you for your presentation, the second go-around. As you are aware, this is the second time I've been involved in this project with Nancy, and so appreciate your efforts in helping us get to this point. We certainly can talk more about the structural issues of the house. It sounds like there's some interest there, and I'm here to answer those questions and any others. I will say this, that I didn't catch the speaker's name, but I'm sympathetic to the same thing the speaker was. As an architect, the first time I went through the project and was presented to me that it was James Maul's design, I didn't know him as an architect at the time, but just the fact that he was an architect and he designed a home.
Would you be able to speak a little louder into the microphone, maybe?
Sorry, is it on? Can you hear me? Not on. How about now? Better. Thank you. All right. Sorry, guys, I didn't realize it was not on. Do I need to restart, or could you hear me from the most part? Okay. So I think it was at the point where, when I walked through the home originally, you know, as an architect, I thought, man, it was like a, you know, looking into my future at some point, and the thought of, wow, you know, all the time that I'd spent designing something that most architects are very proud of would be demoed at some point. That was exactly why the previous project was presented as what it was. We were, the entire concept was to keep the spirit of the existing architecture, and when I say that, we were trying to at least keep the skeleton and the shell of that in the previous project with the previous client. And we came before Planning Commission, and we were approved and had entitlements to do so. Once we got into construction drawings and construction analysis is where we really unfolded the major issues in that concept, and so I'm happy to go through those with you. The structural engineer wasn't available on short notice tonight, but I'm very familiar with the structural drawings and structural calculations. I have provided staff with a highlighted foundation plan and framing plan of the existing home that I can talk through the structural integrity or lack thereof for any specific questions you guys have for me, and, of course, anything else as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Do we know, from looking at the engineers' reports and any other paperwork that came along with this building and the sale to the new owner and all, what kinds of home inspections had been done in the past?
Sure. Typical home inspections were done, but much deeper analysis in the form of structural analysis by a structural engineer, Mike Smith, Smith Structural Group out of San Luis Obispo, came in, and basically, what the previous design was trying to do, again, was keep the skeleton, the perimeter of it, and that's where our original focus is. In fact, this might be the appropriate time for us to bring up that foundation plan, if you want, and I can maybe help you guys understand how we quickly started to realize how little, if any, of the structure we were actually going to be able to maintain or retain without completely reconstructing it. So as you pull them up, I'll kind of summarize what I'm hoping to describe to you. There's two plans, structural plans. There's a foundation plan, and then there's a framing plan, and then there are some details that are associated with those, and what I've attempted to do is highlight areas at which the structural engineer said, we can keep this part of it, but needs to modify to this detail, and then other areas where they simply just said, we've got to completely demo and start over. So I'll walk you through that, and hopefully, you'll be able to see and conclude the same thing we came to, is ultimately, we're going to have to demo the house, which then it didn't, that didn't stay within the spirit of what our intentions were, and that was part of both the decision for the previous client to abandon the project was cost, it was cost prohibitive, and then that wasn't what they necessarily intended that they wanted to do, and that's where we've evolved to now. So, yeah, Dan, if you could go to, I think, yeah, perfect, right there, and I'm not sure how easy the graphic is for you guys to read from up there, but it's color-coded into a yellow highlight and an orange highlight. The yellow component, just kind of on the front left perimeter of the house, was where the structural engineer indicated that we could keep the stem wall, which the stem wall is a concrete foundation component that comes up out of the footing. We determined that we thought those were structurally sound enough, but I'll show you a detail on it here in a minute. What we had to do to amend the structural strength to that area, it ends up being cost prohibitive and very, very challenging to do. The rest that's in orange would be all new footings and all new walls. So just from this graphic alone, you can come to the conclusion of, man, you're basically tearing that house down to rebuild it, and then is that, A, is obviously not cost-effective, and then is it really, are we really doing what we said we were going to be doing in that effort? So if you move to the next one, that's another one. This is the structural frame plan. So again, what I'm showing here in blue highlight are all areas that needed to be reconstructed. So the entire perimeter footing there, and then the one vertical line that's in the middle appears to be floating. Those of you familiar with the existing home, there's a main gable there, and then the perimeter of the house are a flat roof that come up against it. So that main gable, the ridge beam there, we are going to have to put in new pure foundations, so we, you know, new structure from the ground up, and then, in addition, the structural connections that were required, we could have used the existing beam that was there, which was, again, the intent, but there was probably a better solution with just a new beam that would span that, and we wouldn't have to go to the expense of doing it. So, but that's, again, is going against the spirit of trying to keep what was there. I can get specific into the details if you want that additional information, I'm happy to do so, but also just ask any, or to answer questions specific to what information I just presented.
Thank you so much. I think what we'll do is see if there's any other public comment, and then have you stay here so we can ask those questions. I do see, well, I know your partner's there, whether he has something to say, but another person in the audience, do you have any comment? No? Say hi. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we will close, oh, let's see if there's any AGP. Is there anybody in the queue?
There is no attendance on Zoom.
I think I heard there were no people waiting.
Correct. There is no attendance on Zoom.
Thank you. All right. So I hear there's no one in the queue. So we will close public comment, although, again, reserve the right to bring Mr. Eisman back up, and Mike, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just bring Mr. Eisman back up. I just want to clarify something here with Mr. Eisman. Okay, so this was prior to my time, but you said you came to the Planning Commission before, got an approval, and we're going to go forward with a project, right?
Correct.
Okay, so at that point in time, no analysis or no study was done regarding the structural issues? I mean, I'm just from somewhere else, and usually, by then, when you're coming to a Planning Commissioner and getting approval, then you've figured everything out. That's what we're used to. I just want to make sure that we don't continue to have things come back to us because of not enough information. What was the issue that, like, what happened in the first process that you may have discovered that you're coming back to us for?
Yeah. So I appreciate the question, and so just for clarification, there are two different projects now, two different clients, so that definitely is a factor within this analysis, but.
Your mic again. Your mic.
It's not working?
Nope. They probably, it should be on, but.
AGP, I think we're having issues again with the mic at the podium.
And if there's a way to increase the volume to it? I don't know if.
We have it cranked up all the way up there.
Huh, okay.
I don't think any of them are.
Test.
I can hear you.
Yeah. Yeah, sometimes, yeah, when I talk, yeah.
There that's. Nope.
Check. Oh, yeah. And now we got it.
That was good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Eisman, just as you started to talk, I think I've gotten part of it, the fact that there's two different applicants, right? You were here before with a different applicant.
That is correct.
But at that time, they were still ready to move forward with a new project or, you know, to fix the home based upon, you know, the studies and analysis and the information they had at that point in time, so something happened between the first applicant and the second applicant?
Yes, but even furthermore, to your question, I think it's fairly standard practice for architects with projects that we will submit what we would consider schematic design or design development drawings to a planning review, in this particular case, Planning Commission. We don't necessarily flush out all the construction drawings. We don't necessarily flush out all the construction drawings and all the technicalities that go into that prior to that, because we really need the entitlement and the approval to do that, to move forward. Otherwise, you'd be moving forward at risk and potentially doing work that you would have to redo or in that particular case, I guess we would have identified it beforehand, but that was the stage at which the process works.
Yeah, and the only reason, the main reason I ask that is because usually when you come forward, I've done this before somewhere else, but usually when you come forward, you've already fleshed out the major issues such as what the new home's going to look like, any issues with, you know, redoing foundation, foundations, structural issues. You usually have figured those things out the first time around. I was just wondering why we didn't figure it out the first time around. That was my primary concern is that we don't have people coming back the second time saying, well, we tried, but we couldn't figure it out, we hadn't figured out the structural issues, we hadn't figured it out, you know, the foundation issues, right? So we don't want things coming back to us over and over again.
Sure, understood.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
I do think part of the process of doing this kind of work is you may have a hope and a dream and a design.
Yeah, sure.
Once you get under the skin, so to speak, you may find a lot of fatal flaws and it sounds like that's what happened here. I do remember visiting the building in 2019 and it was very special, very charming and yet even at that point, I could, I could see there were challenges, both on the outside and on the inside. I could see those water stains, I could see what was happening with the shingles on the outside. A lot of wonderful features and charming details and it was so great to hear that somebody might be interested in maintaining as much of it as possible. But I could certainly see how getting into it deeper, perhaps the previous owner saw that, realized this was going to be really cost prohibitive for them and not the project they wanted to do, so they sold it. Whether they should have or could have, or maybe they did disclose some of this stuff to the new owners, who knows? But this is the project we have now, so, yeah, but thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, so, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
So Bill, thank you for the statement upfront that, you know, I mean, you get the house, you respect it, it's a significant work. And I don't know how much time, I'd like to go into a little bit of detail on the structural analysis. So let me ask a couple of questions and see what it's going to take to get us there. The study was done not by the structural engineer, but by another architect or another structural engineer?
Another structural engineer, correct.
Is the, was the study done by the guy who did the structural drawings for your house? For the new project?
The new house, the guy, the structural engineer from Ashley Vance Engineering is doing the structural engineering on this new house.
But the guy who did the study is the same guy? No?
Yeah, yeah, Eric, it's, Eric, what's his name? Farley.
And so this was destructive testing? Did they actually dig up footings? How did they, how did they get this in?
So I think, I'm sorry, I think maybe I got your question confused.
Oh, sorry.
So there was a structural design completed for the original project for-
Which was the original house?
Smith, yes, correct, Smith Structural Group. So when that information came to light and the project became cost prohibitive and there were other factors, they ended up, just the project didn't end up moving forward the way they wanted it to. They decided to put the building up for sale. That, the new owner was disclosed of that information and disclosed in the form of the costs that were associated with it.
Right.
So made them think, well, we don't want to go down that same path, we would actually rather start with a clean project.
Right.
So at that time, when we presented the kind of, well, not kind of, a new design to staff, they had asked for supplemental documents. Obviously, we had had a document that stated that the structure was in fair condition, but was going to take some work. It wasn't until we got the entitlements to get into the structural analysis that we realized how deteriorated the house was.
So was there actual destructive testing? In other words, did they open up walls?
Yes, yes.
And they looked at footings?
Yeah, so that might be where some detailing might help out here. So if you can move, please, to the, there's some detail sheets right here and then bottom right. So if you remember the areas that we could actually keep were highlighted in yellow, I'm not know how, if you, are you guys able to, are you guys looking at it here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's too challenging for you, mostly.
We could see it pretty well.
Okay, well, I'll try to describe it the best I can in using the construction terms, but basically we had determined that we could use the stem wall in that area, but that was it. There's the sill plate sits on top of the stem wall and then we had to put hold downs, there were three eighths by six inch hold down.
So was it the concrete or the, or the plates that was-
Combination of everything. I mean, meeting current code and meeting lateral, that lateral analysis is more of a concern, you know? Vertical loads aren't such an issue, you know, we're just keeping up the weight of the building. Here, we're more concerned with lateral movements for earthquakes, obviously. So all that work was-
Current code, this is a historic building, right? So it would get certain breaks relative to the building code.
Nonhistoric building. Yeah, that's the problem, that's the thing that we were talking about before.
So because it's, even though it's recognized as significant, right, as a contributor, it's not a registered historic building.
That's the problem.
So there's no way for it to get any breaks unless you registered it?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Because, you know, every old building, every building that's 50 years old is not going to meet current code.
Sure, right.
Yeah. So I'm still trying to understand, the wood in the house is redwood, right?
Majority of it, yes.
Yeah, and redwood's pretty impervious.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to understand how this assumptions, where were the assumptions? Like, in other words, words, it's not going to be current code, I know that. So how do you, is that what we're talking about, how to mitigate that?
Yeah, so it has to be current code. In this scenario, we're not designing a house and getting credits, if you will, for historic reservation. We were doing a remodel to the home and whatever improvements or changes that were made had to be brought up to current code.
So it, just excuse me for keeping, ask, if you have an existing building that's grandfathered, even if it's not recognized as historic unless you're changing something, right?
Yeah.
So I'm trying to understand what upgrades you were looking at. Why did it have to come to current code? Were you changing walls? What were you doing?
Well, all the windows and all the doors and, yeah.
It's not going to affect the structural.
All interior, the perimeter of the building, absolutely, there was zero shear to it. I mean, it was like a single shaped siding material. There was, there is some vertical like T-111 on it, but there was no shear value to the home.
Right, but again, I mean, don't you have to cross a certain threshold where then you have to start to, you know, upgrade it? Like, you know, typically an existing building qualifies even if it's not historic, right?
Well, certain areas, but I mean, this was a complete, I mean, it was a, basically had to be completely demolished, so if you're going to-
And that's because of the structural work?
That is correct.
Okay, so take me to that. I'm trying to understand what happened to the structural work. Because I know redwood is pretty strong, pretty impervious, was the concrete, you know, was it falling apart?
Yeah, do you have, in our packet, there are images of the stem walls and the, the several structure, or several concrete components that were in bad shape.
Yeah.
And so there was that analysis completed.
And the assumption where you're showing all the areas, that, how do you know it was those areas? I'm just trying to understand.
The structural engineer, the original structural-
And they exposed those footings continuously?
Correct. I mean, it's actually, a large part of the house is a raised foundation, so you can get to that, that part of it and look at it.
So you could actually crawl under the house and touch the concrete?
That's correct. Yeah, and there's a lot of areas that are visible from the outside actually, too. There's some certain, there's some interesting elements that are more like a cantilevered component to, to where you can actually see the stem wall and the cases where there's exposed aggregate and it's, the wall itself is cracked.
So again, the, it's the footings that are the primary problem?
I think, to be honest with you, it's the whole composition as a whole. The home itself has just deteriorated over the years and it hasn't been taken care of. I mean, you can see through, you know, it's just, all the windows are just plate glass and there's gaps like this. You can see sky, you can see skies directly through them all day long and not a water intrusion and just the fact that people haven't lived in it for a year, you know, when you have that happen to a home, the home will deteriorate really quickly, you know, without there being climate controlled and just, just day-to-day maintenance on something, it can deteriorate fast.
In your practice, do you do historic preservation projects?
We have, come across it before, yes, yeah.
You know, I'm, what's the word? I just want to make sure, once we agree to this, the building's gone and it is a significant building. Even though Morro Bay doesn't have a historic ordinance and that's maybe one reason it's worthwhile, are taking some time with this, if this was in another city that does, this is a really important building, you know? It's over 50 years old. It's a very significant architect. He was a Morro Bay architect, which makes him very important, I think, to this area. Another important, you know, significant fact, this was his own home and studio, at least for a time. And how many, you know, buildings did he do locally, residences? What I hear is not that many. So I guess I'm arguing a little bit, one, to see, let's say this was a historically noted building, that it was on a register, how would we go about it then? What would be the difference? And I do understand if it gets to the point of no return, it's just too expensive, right? But on the other hand, I also know it's worth fighting for a significant structure. And so I guess, you know, thank you for your patience, because I'm trying to make sure that this is not sort of there, but really there. And to Mike's question, it does seem strange that if you could crawl under the house and see it, why some of this concern was not understood three years ago? A house doesn't fall apart in a year, really?
Yeah, and again, I can appreciate your comments and understand where you're coming from completely.
Thank you.
I think the one, the one miss we might be having here is in, with Mike's original comment, we hadn't gone through the structural analysis at the time at which we came before the planning commission in that project, because we weren't certain what we could or couldn't get approved. It wasn't until after that that we were like, okay, we have, we have a project here, now we'll get into the structural analysis of it. And it was, it was quite frankly, I mean, it was a surprise to obviously everybody. I mean, the owners were even kind of frustrated, like, man, we didn't realize the house was in this, this bad a shape. So also make sure that you understand that it's unique to that sequence of discovery.
I have a question. The commission will indulge me for a minute.
Please.
You are indulged.
Thank you. So Bill, so when we were going through that, you know, process on the original project, was the reason you didn't look into it further on the kind of structural aspects of it was that you were basically going to be tearing off all the interior wall, you know, coverings and whatnot? So you knew you were going to be replacing all of those, all of that, all of those things? Was that part of it or what was the idea behind that? I mean, just given that you could see that there was damage to the home?
I mean, certainly, that probably played a role into it. I mean, I guess getting back to just the way a typical project is processed, even from, you know, whether it's a remodel project or whether it's from the ground up, when we're, when we're coming before you, we certainly do not have all the foundation details figured out and we don't have all of the, you know, mechanical, electrical drawings, none of that, none of that effort has been completed. It's really at that point, it's, it's called schematic design, it's conceptual, it has, there are parts of it which evolve, which you'll know because you get the plan check back. But to your question, yeah, I certainly think that we knew there was some modification that was going to happen to the interior of the house and at that time, we were going to have the availability to do, to continue assessing the structural stability of it.
Okay, that is good and I do agree with you, that is typically how the process works. When somebody comes in for a planning permit, they're not, they haven't done the structural work on the, on the home yet.
Correct.
That's not a normal process and I do appreciate what you said earlier about that in that, in that it could be expensive for your client, because you can go through a discretionary process and you're going through the review from a staff standpoint or through a planning commission, changes are made and those are now, they're not just architectural changes you're making to the building, you're making structural changes to the building, which is, which is expensive. So I certainly can appreciate that. Thank you.
I guess I, just to kind of keep that thought going one moment longer, if it's destructive testing, where you actually have to dig up footings and, you know, open up walls to see the structural deficiencies, but in this case, someone could have gone underneath the house just to sort of see what the condition was, right? Just, it was observable, 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 observa-
[laughing]
That, that word. You could see it. Again, I'm pushing because I want to make sure that, you know, we're not on a tipping point here and-
Yeah, so I'd actually like to address that question, too. You could have, sure, and I think even if somebody did at that time and identified it, it's still not enough information to be able to conclude one way or the other, probably. It wasn't until we really-
So what kind of testing did the structural engineer do beyond observation?
Prior to us getting entitled, very little, probably.
Okay, then after that, now that you decided to demo it, yeah.
Yeah, once, once we were entitled, then we knew we were going to have to build it, we got into this more structural analysis of that structure based on what we were going to put in it and what new windows and new doors and new structural variables would play into the structure that would be required to build it.
But I mean, the building, you're looking to do shear ties, right? You want to, you want to do seismic work on the footings, right?
Yeah, across the whole perimeter, basically, you know? The part at which we were allowed to keep the stem wall, where we didn't have to even demo the stem, we had to, we had to do a substantial modification supplement to that to make that comply, too, that was, I would say, almost questionable, too. At that point, it could be easier just to tear the foundation up, start fresh and go forward. But there was area that we were trying, we're attempting to, at least initially, trying to save as much as possible, because that was the idea.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And so was it because of the new seismic work that the footings were inadequate?
Again, I would say that is a component of it, for sure, yeah. One of the, one of the larger components in a structural analysis, you're looking at, you know, seismic loads, wind loads, vertical loads, you know, just, you know, areas of glass. And of course, you can imagine between the time at which the original house was built and now, I mean, I'll be the first one to argue that we overbuild residential, single family residential homes in California, like all day long. I mean, we've been through, I don't know how many earthquakes and we all see all these houses that we grew up in stand, but that's the code and there's, that's how we have to build to them to this day. So there's a ton of steel and a ton of concrete that everybody has to pay for that you don't ever get to see.
Can, Bill, can I also sort of interject here? And I was sharing with Nancy a little earlier, having gone through this process of looking for houses in Morro Bay to purchase, was actually in escrow with a house in North Morro Bay, not on a very significant slope, but you know, as I had an outstanding real estate agent who really looked at foundation staff and a really outstanding home inspector who went around that foundation, identified cracks, concrete foundation, concrete is not permanent, you know, it ages, especially in these conditions. And he said, everything is going towards the ocean. Everything in Morro Bay is heading that direction, therefore, everything is creaking, cracking and structurally changing. So I actually paid to have a foundation expert come in, take a look at this house, he could go underneath it. And I opted at that point not to get that house, you know, the expenses of, you know, jacking it up and doing the kind of foundation work, never mind the new roof, everything else that was affected by it being out of skew slowly and gradually for so many years. So it makes sense to me that when you unwrap the package, you often find very- So it makes sense to me that when you unwrap the package, you often find very unfortunate things. And again, somebody came along right after me and bought that house for over asking price and inherited all of those things, which perhaps, again, didn't have to be disclosed necessarily. I think we offered them our, you know, if they wanted it, our reports, just to be thoughtful, you know. But who, I don't, I don't know who bought it or what happened with it. But it's not unusual to have these kinds of challenges and problems from the ground up. And as you know, as an architect, if the foundation is bad, you have to start over. There's, there's not a lot of great options.
And I guess that might be where I'm coming from, is that to save significant houses is not easy. Is it worthwhile?
Yes.
I'm one who thinks that it is. So the question really here is to get an observable eye that would say, I understand why this is beyond the point of no return. And because if it isn't, this is a house that would really, the community would benefit from keeping it. And so the struggle is, yes, those things happen to every house. How about this one? I mean, it's a work of architecture. And it's got a significance that I think if we had a, if we had a, an ordinance in place, I think we would be asking harder questions. And so I guess what I'd like to do is do that, is ask these harder questions till we get the confidence that what we're doing really has to be done. And, you know, that's why I'm asking these kind of technical questions, because it's, it can go either way. And I'm an architect and, you know, a third of my work was preservation work. So been through this on very large buildings and residential work. And I know it's a hard decision, but it's, I think it's important that we have confidence that it really is the right decision to demo the building.
Can we hear from rest of the commission? Joe?
Well, it's, well, it's a statement, a statement and then a question. I'm very much in favor of any effort to preserve this building. But the difficulty that we're being presented with is just a wonderful illustration, as I said earlier, the need to have this preservation ordinance on the books already. Because if, if I'm correct in my understanding of, again, what the California Environmental Quality Act says, if we were presented with a situation where the construction engineer did not say that the house had to be demolished, but the applicant was nevertheless intent on demolishing the house and building one of his own design, I guess we would have very little recourse. And I think I'm correct in that conclusion. You know, so, you know, we're, we're left here sort of what, you know?
Well, let's test that.
All right, I mean.
Scott.
So when you, when you have the situation where you do have, you know, a structure, a building, a home, that's, that's maybe on a register, what have you, then you're going to get different recommendations out of the historian that writes the report for it? And it'll talk, and even if you have structural issues like, that are, that are similar to what's associated with this home, you'll get recommendations out of it oftentimes for things that can be done. Or, and that's what we would be bringing forward to you. And potentially, it's not, we're not finding the project then, at that point, to be exempt. We're going through potentially a mitigated negative declaration process, where there's mitigation measures that are added to the project, to the sequel process, that you were speaking to previously, and that might be what it looks like. In this instance, we don't have any of that support. So, you know, there's really, we don't have that to rely on. And we, again, the problem is, we don't have an ordinance. We don't know what that ordinance might say. And usually, those ordinances deal with things just like this, because this is the problem that always happens, right? Oftentimes, the houses are much older, you know. I mean, I live in a house that's almost 100 years old. So there are all kinds of things that are, you know, that are inherent with, with homes that are, that are very old. This one's not near that old, but still obviously has many issues, so.
But clearly, we do not have the benefit of any kind of an historical declaration. And I would guess that any, any prospective historical preservation ordinance, as a part of it, would probably include a sort of a third-party constructional engineer analysis, I would think at a minimum.
Yeah, and can I ask, kind of, a little bit of, keep on writing that one right there, Scott. So if we did have an ordinance, would we see some kind of, say, saving of the home or structural? If we had an ordinance?
It's hard to answer the question, because it depends what the policies say. Usually, it comes down to the point of like, what are the issues there? You know, because I think even Mr. Eiserman, I mean, he makes a very good point. Like, if you, if you have to reconstruct the entirety of the home, then what have we done? The house is no longer relevant to what it used to be. We've just made it a new facsimile of it, basically. Which is probably not the intent of, of most ordinances, you know, to create like, a new one of what it used to be. The idea is to preserve them, right, as best we can. And if you can't do that, you know, reconstructing it to be what it used to be kind of loses the historic relevance.
And the reason I ask that, Scott, is because this is a full demo, right? This is a full demo?
Yeah, demo and the construction of an entirely unrelated house to the existing.
Okay, and the reason I ask is because I submitted an application for a home that was built in 1925. And in historical district, I went from 1,000 square feet to 2,500 square feet, was asked to preserve some of the structure, and did it. Because there was a historical district. All I'm saying is that if you have an ordinance or a district, you're going to work with the city or the ordinance to make it happen. That's kind of what Bill's saying is, and Joe, if we had that, you know, it would be, and I said at the beginning, if we had those standards, it would be easier for us to push for this or that. But since we don't have it...
I think we're left with dealing with what we have.
That's right.
And, and I would like to hear from Asia, too, has had a chance to speak.
I just have a question for staff. If an ordinance were to be passed sometime in the future, does it depend on the language of the ordinance? How the owners, current owners of current, what would then be designated historical properties locally? How would those owners be impacted?
So there's, there's a couple, I mean, that's, again, it depends on what the ordinance says. And you, and whether your ordinance has that piece to it. Because right now, I mean, you've, you've heard Chair Stewart talk about the fact that we have a draft ordinance that was put in place, was drafted by the Historical Society. That doesn't come with a report that evaluates all of the structures in Morro Bay. We don't have that piece. So you have to have that piece in order to get there. Otherwise, you just, you have an ordinance that just tells you what to do. Tells you you're supposed to go get an historical analysis done, who that's supposed to be by, what qualifications those people are supposed to have. And then it'll speak to things like this, you know, like, what type of information do we need when this kind of, this thing comes up? Because it comes up with all of them, pretty much. There's going to always be issues with them when you have something that's fairly old, right? You're always going to run into issues structurally, you're going to, you're going to run into issues where you don't have shear in the building. I mean, that's just, that's just nature of when they were built. So usually, your ordinance is going to speak to what's supposed to happen with those. And you have guidelines, and we follow them, like, okay, here you go. And if you get down to a point where you can't save the foundation or what have you, and, you know, there's, usually, I've seen different parameters, so I've seen all different kinds of historic ordinances that deal with these things differently. So it's hard to answer the question specifically. It would depend on like, what our menu of, you know, things said in our ordinance. And it really comes down to what's, you know, what's important to Morro Bay and where we go with it. You know, usually, it's pretty typically tailored to the jurisdiction that where the ordinance is adopted, so.
Yeah, and I ask that because this being recently purchased, if there was an ordinance in place, a purchaser can make their purchase decisions based on that ordinance. Although if they already own the home, it's kind of up in the air. But I have to say, like, I'm not a fan of building 3,000 square foot luxury homes. But I also think that holding a homeowner, property owner, to a standard that's not actually in place yet is hard to do. But we did do it a couple of weeks ago, to some degree. And we're kind of in the same position, except we were allowing for conditional uses, which we're not now. We didn't have that same leverage. So I'm, I'm curious to hear from the rest of the commission, not to bring up past projects, but how this might compare in your thinking with it.
I feel like we need to deal with the project that's in front of us, with the code that's in front of us, and with the unfortunate lack of an ordinance. And again, even if we had one, we don't know exactly what that would say. I know the folks who were drafting it felt that it needed to be largely voluntary in terms of private homes. And I think, from all my years of living in this town, I think there's a lot of fear that people have with the historic properties ordinance, that they would lose the ability to do remodels on their home or to sell their home. So I think, I mean, my thought has always been one of the, the big cells would have to be how to help people understand that owning and living in a historic property was an asset to themselves and to the community. That it didn't necessarily sort of condemn you to, you know, staying within a particular footprint of life. Joe?
That's interesting to that subject, because I can assure you, I mean, there are, there are real estate brokers who specialize in historical properties and demonstrate pretty explicitly the additional profits to be made by, you know, maintaining, preserving, and selling an historical property. You know, I have one other issue that, I don't, I don't mean to distract it from, but I, there was one other issue I wanted to bring, it's not even an issue. I guess my question to Nancy, with respect to those various projections for sea rise and that the property is not really significantly endangered by projected sea rise until the 22nd century, I guess. Are those, are those documents part of the bundle of documents that go or should be, should be available to each successive buyer? Is that somehow part of the bunch of documents that are included in notice? Maybe it's even unfair to ask you that, because we're getting kind of far removed from development, but...
I would, I would guess it should come up in a seller disclosure. But most people aren't going to have that. So there are websites available, buyers can look up their own sea level rise analysis for different sites, and it really should be the responsibility of the buyer.
Well, the reason, the reason I mention it is because I see in the conditions, the planning commission conditions it mentions, I think it's number 12, essentially, under no circumstances will the state of California allow you to erect barriers to sea rise. And that's great, except what I imagine, and this is going to get kind of convoluted, so forgive me. But what I imagine is when the danger of sea rise really becomes significant in 10 or 15 years, and properties on the Morro Bay coast are going to be worth, you know, not $3 and $4 and $5 million, but $15 and $20 million. And these are going to be very well-established, influential, successful people owning the homes. And, you know, they are going to argue, successive, I can imagine, successive owners arguing that while they did have notice or actually had actual knowledge of the California law, they also took into consideration the sea rise level projections, which essentially said their property would be safe. And we all know how conservative, albeit inaccurate, some of these projections have been in the past, and they're likely to continue to be so. And so then it becomes a legal battle with armies of lawyers arguing. So I would like, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a good idea to put in this condition, number 12, notwithstanding the above declarations of sea level rise, acknowledge that those estimates could be inaccurate and that nevertheless, the, the owner is advised that barriers will not be permitted. Something that would somehow, something in, in the record of title, if you will, or in the documents that file ownership, that puts them on notice that they can't make this alternative argument that they were relying on documents and that an injustice arises because of this. I apologize if my explanation is some kind of convoluted, but that's what I'm getting at. I want, I want to foreclose the well-heeled with their army of lawyers saying, guys, I know what the law says, but this is an injustice, because I was relying on scientific studies.
Do you mean with the liability, so that the city is protected from that liability in the event of, like, natural disaster?
Well, I, that too, but I'm arguing that they will somehow be able to overton the consequences and actually the letter with the California law, by saying it's an illegal taking of property.
I'm not concerned about any of that. Ultimately, this is in the coastal appeals jurisdiction in the state of California, and ultimately, the jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission. And they would be responsible for defending it. So I have no, I have no concern. And at the end of the day, we also have a requirement in here that they hold harmless and defend us. So if they want to sue us, they're also going to pay our lawyers and ultimately, the lawyers for the state of California to take them to court. So I'm not, I'm not super concerned about that.
Well, that's reassuring, but, you know, if, if we were to include some kind of a provision that I was thinking about, it also would make their case very much more difficult against the coastal commission.
Do you know what, like, Stinson Beach and some of the managed retreat communities are, how they're dealing with that?
This language is exactly what California Coastal Commission wants to see in all of these oceanfront properties. So I would be hesitant to mess with their language, because this is exactly what they have told us to include in these properties.
That sounds like good advice.
And in areas where they, we find where there might be, or a project may be at more risk based on sea level rise analysis, and that'll change over time, you'll be required to record deed restrictions against the property that acknowledge it as well. Our local coastal land use plan requires that as well, so. This, this is, in this instance, they really didn't have that much of an issue, because the structure wasn't really threatened, based on the current knowledge of sea level rise in this location.
Well, but that's, that's, that's my point. I'm, I take the wisdom of your statement. I think, and I will, I will be satisfied with that. But I also know that these reports have had a history of just being inaccurate and conservative and underestimating the dangers, but that's all I'm going to say about it.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, no, it's a good, it's an important discussion.
I have a comment.
Make a comment. And shall we let Mr. Eiserman sit down? Or do you have?
Let him stand there for one more minute, if you would, Bill. And, you know, really, thank you very much. You've made a very compelling case. I'm going to suggest something, and like, let us all chew on it. I think Morro Bay, we are champions for historic preservation. We have a really rich community here. If nothing else, we have to elevate and raise the idea of getting this ordinance passed. It was one of our first priorities last year. In this case, as much as I like Bill, I would like to suggest that what we do is we continue this to the next meeting. And what we do in the interim is we ask for the structural engineer to be at the next meeting. And I would volunteer, the two of us will go and look at, and tour the house, just to sort of see what we have. I think what we get out of that is we get, give confidence to the community that we have done everything we could to confirm what Bill is telling us and what the owner wants to do, and we can move forward with great confidence, knowing that we've gone through that exercise. I don't think it costs much time. It would be the next meeting, which is the first in January, January 3, I think. And it would give us the chance to hear from the structural engineer and to ask these tough questions. So that would be my, my motion.
How does staff feel about that?
This is an important issue. And it's, and it's important to the community. So I think what Vice Chair Oshin is requesting is, I think, reasonable. And I do think the community's watching, right? I mean, I mean, Ms. Winholtz came here, she, obviously, she was in the middle of going between places, because she ran in... between places because she ran in.
Ran out.
She goes to too many parties.
Yeah, she's very popular. So I mean, it was important enough for her, you know, to come by here and make the statements that she did. And that's because she's been here for a long time and understands the historic nature of that, and it was of concern to her, and I'm sure it's of concern to, you know, folks that she often represents here. So I do think there is some community, you know, concern about this, maybe not a whole lot of folks in the audience for it, but I do think they do watch what you do. And the historic preservation piece, I think speaks to a majority of this community, really. I do, I do hear people speak about it all the time. We don't want to lose what we are, you know, as we move forward into the future. So I, one meeting, you know, I mean, we'll certainly work with Mr. Eiseman to make sure that their structural engineer could be available at that meeting, you know, but I think one meeting, and I think we can make that happen. I mean.
I don't know how your agenda looks, but.
We have two other houses on Beachcomber at the next meeting, but so it'll be a Beachcomber night.
So full disclosure, there's going to be a lot of people's heads spinning to keep them all straight.
So yeah, that's the interesting part about it. We have two other houses on Beachcomber. The other two houses are submitted by the same applicant, but.
And Asia had a question as well?
Yeah, just in the event that, when we hear the explanation by the structural engineer, in the event that it's not, I don't know a better word, but satisfactory, or it's not.
Do you mean convincing?
Or convincing to the request. What, what's, what are next steps? I mean, what, what requests do we have?
And before.
Yeah, because we don't have a historic ordinance, we really can't say you can't tear it down.
I think Bill made a motion, and I would like to second that, but I'd like to talk about why, and it gets to Asia's point. You know, we have a home that was built by a noted architect of Morro Bay, very famous, and he built his structure. All we're doing at this point is getting more time to further evaluate what we're doing, especially since we've been asking for a historical district, you know, ordinance for a long time. We need to stop asking and start getting it done because we're going to start losing, not on, this, this has particular history because of the fact that it was built by somebody who's very popular in the architect community, and it's in Morro Bay. So that, that, those are the only things that influenced me to continue this. Because once it's gone, it's a full demo. I asked staff, is this full demo? Yes, it's full demo. I built a home, I, I, I lived in a home that was built in 1925, and I tried to preserve it because we had an ordinance, we had a district. So we have to stop, you know, delaying and getting something in staff's hands so that we can, moving forward, that's what Scott was trying to say. The community does care. So I will second that based upon the fact that Ms. Winholtz came in here, the community is watching, they are looking, and they do want to preserve Morro Bay.
But I guess to what end? Like what is our, what, are we just delaying the inevitable?
No.
No.
If I would offer that, one, this is not to disparage, you know, what Bill was here and told us today. So what we want to do is have a, an independent set of eyes that says yes to this.
So are you asking for another engineer to come in?
No, no, no. I think it would be, would be the subcommittee, whoever decides to go from the planning commission with staff, where we just take a look and we, and we hear from the structural engineer.
I think what's important is that the structural engineer is the expert. They are the ones who know, yeah, I mean, we can say, gee, it looks.
Susan, the reason you have a third party is that the structural engineers are always hired by the owners.
Absolutely.
Who have an invested interest. So there has to be a balance of power there. So even though he is, or she is a professional, professionals do oftentimes go along with the applicants. And honestly, I've seen it thousands of times. I'm not suggesting that's the case here.
Do I have a minute to?
Sure.
So to that point, I did not hire the, the structural engineer, the original one that we went through. The previous client hired that structural engineer to do that structural analysis. So I just want to make sure that everybody's certain of that. The secondary report was hired by my new client, but it, it actually is not nearly as convincing as the structural analysis that was done to save the building.
Well, and I think that's, you know, Bill, I mean, I guess that's why I'm asking for the continuance, is let's hear from the structural engineer. Let's get it here so that we can ask these tough questions, we can get it done, we'll know, we'll offer the community confidence that yes, we were convinced and we looked hard at it. And what we're also doing is expressing the value that this building has. You don't get a famous architect in Morro Bay all the time, and this is his home, not just a great work of architecture.
I guess my concern is that like we're going through a process for, without any legal standing or authority, and there's like a couple of other issues with this that I would really like to push that are going to be a part of the new zoning code, but we're not doing that because the code isn't enacted yet. And so I appreciate that this is a unique property, and I definitely think waiting a couple of weeks is not the end of the world. I guess I'm just looking for consistency on our part as well, in our processes.
Joe?
You know, emotionally, I would support that effort, but again, if somebody after this meeting were to ask me, to what purpose did you delay it? I could say, well, in the hopes of publicizing the likely, potential and likely loss of an historical building and the seriousness that that represents, the serious damage it represents to the community. But in terms of actually a decision, I don't see how it can affect our decision. While it is.
Maybe just not credibility.
I, I think you also run the risk of those folks who might be out there watching who think, boy, I hope they never pass a historic preservation ordinance because it looks really scary and I might, I will lose all my property value and that kind of thing.
I think these discussions are helpful there because there's a lot of benefits of having a historic property.
You have no argument here.
Tax benefits and all those sorts of things. So I think the story we want to tell is a complete one. And basically what we're asking is to hear from the structural engineer, the guy who did the original testing, so he can say, he is the expert in this case, you're right, Susan. We can hear him say it firsthand. And that's what we're asking for. That takes an extra couple of weeks, that would be my motion.
So you don't feel that it's enough in his report to hear that, that you really want to have him say it in front of TV?
So a couple, a couple of things, as I'm looking at the calendar. We're not going to have the ability to put together a staff report and have it ready for that meeting.
Oh, that's fast.
Because everybody's out next week. So we, it would have to be the 17th, which actually, I think, if that's where we're going. Vice Chair Oshin also indicated a desire to conduct a site visit, it sounded like with the structural engineer, so that's like two things?
If, if he could, but we wouldn't require, I wouldn't require it.
Okay, okay. So that's, so minimally, we want him here at the meeting. And if there's ability to, I guess, go out there, then that's good to, okay. I heard what you'd said before.
Yeah, that would be the motion, exactly.
So I just want to get clarification, obviously, from my end too. Because the structural engineer that prepared those structural drawings, that is, that's saying that you can build that, rebuild the house as is, but these are the structural details and components that it requires to do so. And so then that was deemed, you know.
Too expensive.
Too expensive, correct. So say that's the same conclusion, because that's what he's going to say, is that, yeah, we, we can, but this is basically, it's rebuilding the whole thing. At that point, how does that change the decision? And who, I guess, at that point, at that point, that's where it goes back to you guys' ordinance. If we don't have something to take it back to, to where unless the city wants to buy the property and preserve it, I don't know, I mean, obviously, the owner at this point understood that he could have rebuilt that as it was and the costs that were associated with it, but chose that that wouldn't be, in his case, in his mind too, it wasn't keeping it, if what Jim Moll wanted. So I want to make sure we're making sure that we're all understanding that. I mean, we couldn't, you know, make it a park and do nothing to it, to, to a certain extent, but if we're really talking about rehabilitating that structure to where it's habitable and to where people in the public can utilize it, there's big dollars involved in it. So I don't know how.
So that's what we want to hear. And that would give me the confidence to say, yes, you've done your due diligence, and yes, we should destroy this house.
Okay.
And for what that's worth, that represents something to the community that we've tried hard. And that's the, the clear evidence and the professional opinion. And we would be able to sort of, as a third party, say yes to that.
So one of my challenges with that is that it is a private home. It's not open to the public, it's not available for people to walk the property and look at. There's a, a good list in the historical report of the, the properties that he did design that are all over the county and around Morro Bay. Certainly, the Garden Gallery is one for folks who maybe didn't have access to, to this report. San Luis Obispo Original Airport Building, which is now no longer being used as the airport, they have a new building. Public Library in Cambria, Tidlins Park in Morro Bay, the Salt Building on the Embarcadero, Marina Square, the Carmel Lutheran Church in San Luis Obispo, Ragged Point Inn. I mean, he's done a lot all over this county. These are all buildings the public can access or, or parks the public can access. Again, I love this house. I got to go through it inside and out, and, and it's a great feature. It's not like Walnut Street in Santa Cruz, which has the grand ladies all in a row of these wonderful old Victorian houses. It's, so I, I, I guess I'm sort of leaning more with Asia that, you know, are we sort of prolonging the pain just to sort of scratch the itch that says, you know, I really want to double check and make sure? Or do we trust the experts who have developed these reports, done their investigations, had hoped to reconstruct the building, at least from the inside, preserving the exterior appearance, and found they were unable to? I, I don't know. That's my.
Well, for what it's worth, you know, Jim is our Frank Lloyd Wright, and when you go to Oak Park and you, you know, you see Frank Lloyd Wright's home from the outside in his studio, it's one of the great anchors for his work. We're not there yet, but I guess as champions of Morro Bay and preservation, I think it's worth, worth the extra effort. If there's any way to save this house, I'd love to see it saved.
Well, we have a motion then on the, yeah.
And a second. And the fact that Scott actually said that he saw some benefit in doing it, you know, our staff is actually along with this. I mean, you know, we didn't try to influence them, we just asked them, what is your opinion? Staff said, hey, there's nothing wrong with giving more time. It's actually a good thing. Because you had people running in the door trying to get their opinion. There's more of that.
A person, yes.
They're not here right before Christmas.
Right. So we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. Is there any further discussion on this, Joe?
So there, so there, project, there's this, you know, a second examination of the house, and even if through discussions, the cost of rebuilding the house could be reduced by 50%. If the owner feels that that's still exorbitant and he doesn't want to spend it, he's under no, he's under no obligation to do so. So the, the only benefit I see is, is the possibility of this second examination convinces the owner that he should reexamine his ambitions.
That's right.
Yeah. But, you know, I, I, as it stands now, I don't believe that that specific task is the appropriate business of this commission.
And can I, can I just add something, Joe, to that? Just one little thing that may register. You know, our job as planning commissioners is to apply existing zoning guidelines and standards, you know, that exist in Morro Bay today. But there are exceptions, there's always exceptions to what we do. And one of them is history. We're trying to preserve, this would give us an opportunity to possibly preserve some history. That's the only element that, we're not just doing this for nothing, we're doing it for the history of Morro Bay.
So one of the, the mitigations that the state offers for that is.
We're not there yet.
What was proposed, this documentation. And I've certainly, I used to do archaeology work where we did prehistoric and historic projects, and the, and this is what, in general, they require, is the photo documentation of something when it's been deemed, you know, too expensive or too damaged to preserve it. So that would be the ultimate end to that.
And you know, Mike, that's, that is a persuasive argument. I mean, what you're suggesting is that we, we as a body, in the interest of preserving the history of the community, make one more effort, which is not terribly financially onerous, to persuade that this building be saved.
And maybe not the whole building, maybe just.
I, from this, I don't.
That's the planning commission.
So I, I think.
But mindful that it's persuasion.
That's right.
Not force.
Is there like a structural, second structural engineer that we could get an opinion from because, like on staff or something? Because we're going to hear what we see already today.
Yes, I, I don't think we're going to hear anything different. This is the report, this was the engineer, this is, I feel like Mr. Eiseman has, is well-versed in the engineering challenges and has clearly spent time with this engineer going over these problems. So at this point, I think we should vote on the motion.
Okay.
And take it from there, depending on how that goes.
Can I be last?
Go for it.
Well, I think you could.
Poll the commission.
Go ahead.
Let's poll the commission. Commissioner King?
What, I wanted to be last.
You're first.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to vote no on the motion.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Vice Chair Oshin?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
No. Thank you.
But I would love a chance to tour it.
You can now.
All right, so apologies to the owner and to Mr. Eiseman. It looks like we will see you potentially in two to four weeks, sounds like more like four.
Yeah, we'll bring it back on, was it the 17th?
As soon as we can.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be at the meeting on January 17th.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate all your work, sir, thank you. All right. We have no new business. We have nothing under unfinished business, but I bet Mike has something.
I'll let Joe do it this time, Joe, for the public benefit or community benefit.
I believe at the last meeting, I was, I was going to give an update on the status of the additional community benefits report vis a vis the other advisory committees that had seen it, which were, and the Public Works and the Harbor Boards had expressed an interest. And Eric, the Harbor Director, had said that his board had in fact reviewed the report and then was making, had or would make recommendations to Scott's office. And with respect to the Public Works Advisory Board, when I was out of town, but I did view later a video copy of it, and they had some relatively few comments, which consisted of what? Various Public Works Board members said that a public benefit should exclude any explicit cash payments. There was a suggestion that flood resiliency projects, whatever that means and specifics, should be added to the benefit menu as well as bike racks. I never went to actually check to see if bike racks are currently on the menu list or not. I'm pretty sure they are, but if they aren't, they should be added. And again, just there was an overall comment that care should be taken, that there was a community embrace. a community embrace, that whatever benefits are proposed or accepted are indeed unequivocally, undisputedly benefits. So that was the extent of the input from the two other boards that wanted to entertain it.
Yeah, and I'll just now piggyback on what Joe said, the fact that one of our subcommittee members will be putting that input into a final draft report, right? So we'll be updating our initial report. So that will be built into the final draft, which should be coming in the first week of January. So the point was to try to get it agendized, right? So, Joe, do we want to agendize it for the second meeting, Scott, of January, if we have the time now? Or we can do it the first meeting of February. We're not going to die if we do it.
I think, you know, based on the fact that we have this last item continued and we have two other items that are on that agenda, both on Beach Comer, both which include variances, I don't think it's a good idea to add other items to that agenda. I think the first one in February is a good idea, though. And we have room in the agenda, so.
Because I actually wrote that in an email to staff and the subcommittee, that if we need to push it to February, that's, that's okay. We don't, but we're going to get it. We're going to get it done. We're going to get it presented, re-presented with the changes, and we're going to vote on it and move it. Because we've been sitting on it for like seven, eight months. We need to move this. Thank you.
Is there not a meeting the first Tuesday of January?
No, 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 there is.
Oh, okay.
We just, we don't have time to put together an agenda, like to add items to the agenda. We literally just completed the items that are on there right now, so.
Okay, so that's hopefully going to be put on the agenda for the first meeting in February. Any other unfinished business?
I have a comment, and I'm never quite sure whether my comment is going to be appropriate at the meeting or at this part of the meeting. So interrupt me if I'm saying something that I really should not say. Having said that, I'm aware that several important decisions by this body, then recommendations then went to City Council, and the recommendations were not approved. And I'm speaking specifically about the design district for the downtown area and also the recent suggestion of upzoning. And I might also actually add, so there are particular concerns to me, and I'm wondering if we should talk about, at some time, about how to present these after the first of the year to a no city council in the hopes of having the decision reversed. And I might also add, based on this meeting, the significance, the immediate need to have a historical preservation ordinance quickly.
Yes.
So I don't know, you know, the mechanism for doing that or whether we can.
Scott, could you give us an update on the design district? Is that appropriate?
So it's a, it is a future agenda item for the city council. Idea was to form a committee, not just of planning commissioners, but of folks outside that body. We have one right now that's looking at housing at the south end of town. And it might be that entity. That includes some folks from the chamber and council and whatnot. We would have new people on it potentially now, since we have new council members. The council just got seated a week ago. So there, and, you know, we have three new council members, and they're coming up to speed. In fact, I think I'm meeting with one or two of them tomorrow or maybe Thursday. Still trying to work out the scheduling of all that. But they're trying to come up to speed with everything that's going on in the city right now. And so we're probably not going to be bringing anything to them right after the holidays. But maybe a meeting or two after that, we'll bring things forward as it relates to the design district item. Certainly, we're going to be in January, February, we're going to be having conversations about the goal-setting process for the city council, because that's when it starts. We're going to have surveys that are going to be going out to the community as a whole. And then working with the city manager on how the advisory boards are going to be engaged in that process, what that will look like. And Scott's working on that on the city council end, on whether that's joint meetings we're going to be holding, or the planning commission will come up with a list of things they want, and we'll bring that forward. And maybe I go, you know, to the, we go to the goal-setting meeting, you know, with a couple of planning commissioners to speak to the city council, I don't know. We're still working through what all that might look like. But there are all things on our radar, and they're all things we're looking at. So I think the, there's a lot of interest certainly in the historic preservation ordinance, not only from you, not only from the planning commission, but from outside entities as well. So I imagine that'll be at least a, you know, conversation they'll be having.
Can I just interject something, Susan? Because I think it was significant and important. Last week, I participated in an APA, American Planning Association National Conference that was done via Zoom. And it was like an intense two and a half hour meeting, but we approved national zoning guidelines for, for the country, I mean, as a body. And it was done unanimously. You know, people from all over the country agreed there should be certain standards that everyone uses. So planning is a never-ending process. You know, we just approved some zoning guidelines on a national level. We're trying to do it on a local level. Well, guess what? There's, there's a push from Louisiana, Texas, from New Orleans, from all these other places that want to see national guidelines that we can use in helping us do our job. So I just participate in that. I am a delegate for the National APA. I may be appointed as the, as a, as an executive board member for the SLO APA. So my name's in the hat. I like doing this. I like national policymaking. I like regional policymaking. I like local policymaking. So all I'm saying is planning is a never-ending process. So we can adjust, Joe, to get back to what you're saying. Yes, if we want to see a, you know, a committee that works on that, that can always be decided at the next meeting, is what I'm saying. It never, you know what I mean? That was decided at a prior meeting, at a prior council. But you know what? That could change overnight. We did that at a national level, and I was shocked that everyone, 100% of the delegates approved it at a national level. That's impossible to do. So I just thought I'd share that.
It's very exciting, Mike.
Yeah, it is exciting.
Especially since Texas doesn't even have zoning.
Oh, wow. So you had extremes, the extremes in the, the extremes in the country coming together and agreeing on something.
And what was in the Kool-Aid? No.
Well, we were, we were on, we were on Zoom, so there was no Kool-Aid.
So that's really amazing. Oh, my goodness.
But I'll be giving you that information, by the way. I'm going to give you, I'll be forwarding it to Scott. I'll give you the national zoning guidelines that were approved on a national level for all of you. I'll send them to Scott.
Yeah. And then I think you all did get a copy of the draft historic preservation ordinance, do you recall?
I think Scott sent it to us.
I sent it out.
Yep.
You didn't get it, let me know.
In the mail?
It'd be worth reading it, email.
Email, I emailed it to everybody, yeah.
Yeah, in the mail? Where are you from? Yeah. It's worth reading. Again, I probably shouldn't express my personal feelings, so I won't. But there was a tremendous amount of effort, and I think very talented and experienced people put time into it. Would love more teeth, something like that.
Can I, can I do one more interjection, Susan? Because I didn't want to leave.
Tell you what, I'm going to put us at the planning commissioner comments and future agenda items.
Yeah, that's fine.
So you're having a comment.
The reason, listen, people, the reason I even thought about SLO, doing this regional executive board thing, is because I feel, I've talked to certain planning commissioners, we need to push for housing and affordable housing on a regional level. We're not going to do it in Morro Bay. When that, when that opportunity came on, came up, the light went off. I said, hey, if I get on this executive board, I can push for housing and affordable housing on a regional level.
Yeah, I think there's a big effort.
Yeah, so I just, but, but when you're on the, when you're on that actual board, you're an executive board, you have the ability to talk to people and get things done. So that's what I meant about do it because there's a benefit in doing it. So that's it.
Okay, any other planning commissioner comments or future agenda items? Yes, sir.
It is the end of the year for us.
Yes, it is.
And it has been an exciting year. We have not always agreed.
Which is good, healthy.
It's a good thing.
And we have not always agreed with staff. But so I did want to reach out and say, Scott, thank you. You are, you've done a great job this year. Really appreciate your effort. Even when we haven't always agreed with what you were proposing, I think you've been very supportive and helpful of the commission. So I wanted to say thank you for that. And then, you know, just to say thank you to all of us, that this is, you know, we talk often to an empty room. And I think it's going to change. We have too many big projects in this town to continue that. And I think one of the reasons that we've been difficult this year, like even amongst us, is that we're heading towards those bigger projects. And it's going to be a new world when we start dealing with, you know, 90 developable acres on the bay. And, you know, there's going to be big stuff happening. And I think we're, I don't know, I think we're preparing ourselves, I guess, as a responsible commission.
I would also like to say kudos to staff because we got the general plan and the zoning code done. I mean, yay, good job. And personally, another thing that I just have to express because we're on TV, maybe somebody's watching, I love the wayfinding signs. They were worth the wait. They're beautiful, they show up in the dark. I know I read some comments somewhere, you know, why did we need these? Everybody just has GPS on their phone, and we need them. We really need them. We don't want people to be looking at their phone when they're supposed to be driving down the road, checking out the signs. We want people to come to our town and have an easy way to get around without that technology and to understand that there are districts. There is a downtown, there is an Embarcadero, there is a North Morro Bay, where City Hall is, where the chamber offices are, so on. So I appreciate the effort. I know it was you, and I believe Erica helped out with that as well from the chamber. But they're fabulous, they're up, they look great. I like everything about them. So thank you, thank you so much for that.
That was a long time coming.
It was. It sort of got to be the in-joke, oh, yeah, wayfinding, sure.
So Asia and Joe, you have to have a final comment.
Yeah, come on, end of the year comment.
Well, of course, thank you, Scott, particularly for tolerating my, my fumbling through my comments. It's much appreciated, it really is.
Thank you.
Well, I was going to say this privately, but I really have learned a lot from all of you guys and all of your experience and perspectives. And so I really appreciate it, just being in, younger in my career at least, and looking at this kind of stuff, so.
We need your voice here. Not that we're old.
I hope to.
You're kind of rubbing in the, you know, younger thing. And I'll say this back to Asia, is the fact that we went on the, you know, the tour and moss landing together, and Asia's done a tremendous job in catching up to speed.
Yeah.
At a, I mean, we're talking over 100 miles an hour. You know what I mean? I mean, Asia's done enough fans task, you know, based upon the fact that I have 10 years of experience and she has less than one, she's already gotten to a good place. About how much as a planning commissioner?
There you go.
So all I'm saying is she's gotten to a good place in the time she's, she's had. Great job, Asia.
All righty, would you like to have some comments, Scott?
I do have a couple. You know, speaking about planning commissioners, we have two open seats on the planning commission. That would be Commissioner Chair Stewart's seat and Commissioner King's seat. Whether they're going to reapply or not, that is entirely up to them. But we do have those two seats. And they're, the application process is open and will be open until the 30th of this month. So if there are folks that are interested, or if you guys are going to put your names back in the hat, you need to do it by then. Following that, the city council will conduct interviews on the 10th of January. And then when we come back on the 17th of January, we'll be choosing new officers, which is the chair and vice chair. So that is what the process will look like in front of you as this plays out for not only planning commission, but other advisory bodies as well. We did receive an appeal of the 101 Fig Street process, project by Terry Simons, largely related to the garage setback variance. And so that'll be going to city council here in a couple of meetings, I think. We wanted to give the new city council a little bit of a break and not hit them with appeals right immediately, so let them, you know, get used to working with one another for a meeting or two before we brought that forward. But that'll be, that'll be coming soon as well. And then finally, I'd like to thank all of you, appreciate all the work that you've done, especially related to the general plan and zoning code. That was a huge lift. And a lot of work goes into that. And a lot of you came in sort of at the, at the end of that, and you weren't scared away from it, you rolled up your sleeves, you listened to the community, you provided a lot of good input, valuable input that the city council, I think, really appreciated, even though they did make some changes to it. You know, there's a lot of factors that go into that. It's not just what happens from a recommendation standpoint, but there's outside factors that play into that that the council has to consider when they make decisions, because they are the ones that make the policy. We are the ones that recommended the policy, but they are the ones that make the policy. So definitely appreciate all the work that went into that. And as Vice Chair Roshan said, we have a lot of things coming in the future that are very interesting and can be, you know, kind of game changers in the, in a scheme of what we have going on from an economic development standpoint, and even what we have from a public improvement in infrastructure and just how things feel along, maybe even just the Embarcadero. We have some projects that are coming forward, they're going to fill gaps on our Harbor Walk, which is fantastic. So a lot of things to, you know, along those lines, look forward to and improvements on circulation and that type of thing that come with, you know, potentially some of these other projects that you'll be seeing maybe in the not-too-distant future. So thank you, and happy holidays to you all.
Great, thank you, Scott. Well, I think that does it. We are adjourned. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be January 3rd at 6:00, 2023. Happy New Year, everybody.